If you will all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I would like to welcome all of you to tonight's city council meeting. We are all going to try really hard this evening to speak into our mics so that you all can hear us. If you cannot hear us, if you'll just wave your hand so that we know that we need to do a little better job. Well, part of the reason for you guys being here is to be able to hear what we have to say. So it feeds the purpose if we're not projecting well enough. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The listing under the consent agenda is a group of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite regular routine manners by city council. I will ask if a citizen or any member of council wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda prior to its vote. And at that time, anybody from the audience or from council can choose to have an item removed. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes for January the 23rd, 2018, approval of the expenditure vouchers for February the 13th, 2018, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Hunan Chinese Restaurant, approval of a special event permit for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce. That's for their business hours after program that will be held on February the 15th at Southwest Printing Brand Central, approval of a special event permit for the Pinion Project. And that is so the Pinion can sponsor a Celtic Fair on June the 23rd, 2018 at Park de Vida. So at this time, if there's anybody in the audience or on council that would like to remove any of those items. All right, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with extra expenditures of $32,323.28.
A second.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Sheik. Aye. Caught me in mid-sentence. Sorry. We have no presentations this evening. We have two times when citizens may step up before council and present issues that are not on the agenda. Now is the first time, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to step up to the mic and speak before council, this is your first chance. All right, seeing no one come forward. Public hearings. We have to wait for the lawyer to come back in because he's up. Ordinance number 1237, series 2018, approving a declaration of emergency ordinance. Mr. Green.
Excuse me, I'm getting scared about all of it tonight. This ordinance has to deal with the process as to how the city declares an emergency and as to authorized spending and decision-making amongst the various situations. It also allows you to dediate from things that say the meeting can only be held here, that certain things have to happen, notice can be waived, for example, in emergency situations. Staff is, this is part of the emergency operations plan, and so staff recommends that this be accepted and approved. I think last time we looked at the fact that some amount of fluidity with this is pretty important. There were towns in the big floods that just had to go to another county almost to have their meetings and things. And so this would allow you to go to Dolores or go to Mankas or just go outside the town, whatever was available.
All right, are there any other questions, council? At this point, I will open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this emergency plan? Seeing no one step forward, I'm closing the public hearing. If there are no other questions or comments by council, may I have a motion?
Honorable mayor, I make a motion to approve on final reading ordinance number 1237, series 2018, approving the procedures for declaration of emergency ordinance.
Second. Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Sheik. Aye. The next item is ordinance 1238, series 2018, which has to do with prohibiting unauthorized entry onto the Cortez Municipal Golf Course. Mr. Green.
This ordinance is again designed to make things easier for everybody. It limits the places you can access the golf course to the existing, I guess I'll call them more or less, public entries. We're going to add another one on the east side, and so this would restrict where you get on the course and how you get on the course and where you go once you're there.
Any questions or comments, council? All right, I will open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this ordinance? I'm closing the public hearing. If there are no other comments or questions, may I have a motion?
Madam mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve on final reading ordinance number 1238, series 2018, approving an ordinance prohibiting unauthorized entry onto the Cortez Municipal Golf Course.
Second.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Sheik. Aye. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial item. It is a public hearing on a new retail marijuana store license for a company called Chronic Therapy LLC, Cortez. Because this is a quasi-judicial item, I would like to ask if anyone on council has discussed this topic with anyone prior to this evening? If so, at this time, would you please disclose that conversation so that a determination can be made as to whether you should participate in the discussion and vote on this matter? So has anybody had any conversations on this topic? All right. In that case, we'll open the discussion. Roy or Boyd, which one's going to, the mic's going to start?
Madam mayor, this is a sense it's a quasi-judicial item. This has a little bit more of a formal process to it than maybe we've had in the past. What will happen is the applicant will present information to you. There's a book which with the applicant's okay, will just pass out. We've agreed that you can consider everything in this book in, just slide down, towards the application. As we stated, staff does not have a recommendation, but both the applicant and the city will be presenting evidence. What I had anticipated was the applicant would go first. If council or myself had any questions or the applicant we could ask those, then Officer Nagle would testify on behalf of the city. Witnesses would be sworn in and we would go down through the process and then we'd be ready to make a decision.
All right.
And there'll be people talking about what's in this book. It's for you to use for reference.
Oh, good.
Because it's nothing without either Officer Nagle or the applicant saying, oh, this is what this means.
This is a little different than we've done in the past.
Yes, sir. Things need to be a little more formal. We're starting to get applications which are different than what we've had in the past. The majority of who we have is in place before we actually enacted some of our marijuana rules and regulations. The only one I could think of that wasn't in place would be the Sisters over Broadway. I think the rest of them were all in some form or another in place before we even enacted the ordinance. So, yeah, we are developing a different process.
Is this going to be the new normal where we pretty much go through it?
We are discussing this being the new normal for licensing for brand-new licenses or this and perhaps even alcohol.
I'm just wondering for the sake of expediency if there's things that we can take care of in-house prior to, you know, going through all of this at a council meeting?
The other thing we discovered is this needs to be done at a council meeting pursuant to your ordinance. You need to know we followed the process. Maybe tonight will be a little bit much because we'll be interviewing the things. I think in order to have a good record for both the applicant and yourself, we need to slow down and go through all of this.
Will we be doing the same thing for nature licenses?
Don't know yet. It hasn't been decided. But like I said, these are things we might be looking at so that you have more information, understand everything that's going on. Say it's a brand-new license, a brand-new place, just like this one.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm just going to give this to distinctive records for the book to put in the file. And here's the same book that we hollowed out. And just to give us some pause, I do have to say this. If somebody wanted to make the motion and jump right ahead and say, you know, we just want to approve and we don't want this long hearing, I really, you know, disapprove. That's council's choice, but I think there's evidence and things you need to give to both sides.
Sure. No, I was just.
No, it's a good question, sir.
All right, so we'll begin with the applicants. Both of them, both of them should work.
They should.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address the city council regarding our application for a retail marijuana license. My name is Sandy Bedore, and I am one of the proud owners and CFO of Bedore Claude LLC, and we do business as chronic therapy. Next to me is, and we want you to get to know us a little bit tonight. Next to me is my son Jason Saunders, who is another owner and our chief executive officer. We have two missing owners tonight. One of them is our business partner, Robert Domagada, who is home with his two little girls. And we are also missing my oldest son, Matt. He is currently, sorry, let me close myself. It's very exciting. He is currently coaching our U.S. Freestyle Aerial Athletes in Pyang Chang.
All right.
Yep, and we're hoping to go for gold at the Olympics. And Jason and I, as a matter of fact, are heading to the Olympics tomorrow to cheer on our athletes. And it'll be my son's last Olympics as coach, but he's also a partner in our business. So, go USA, right?
Right.
Our journey began about a decade ago or so when we became part of the pioneering group to grow and sell medical marijuana. You see, our business partner and my son's lifelong friend, Robert, was looking for help for his failing dad who was diagnosed with a debilitating form of cancer. In addition, my son, who's the coach for the U.S. Ski Team, had experienced a grand mal seizure and was later diagnosed as having neurofibromatosis, NF for short. And his form of neurofibromatosis is that he's got small tumors on his brain that are inoperable. Modern medicine failed both of these people completely. And the only thing that saved them was medical marijuana at different times. Both of them had successfully, they're not cured or anything, but they are now functioning fully. Robert's father, who had been on disability insurance and disability pay for over two years, is now back at work full-time. And then my son is doing his second Olympics as a coach for the U.S. Aerial Freestyle Ski Team. That would not have happened without medical marijuana. It just went to, they probably both would be dead by then. We began as caregivers out of my son Jason's garage. Then we moved to a small facility in Denver as the regulatory process began. And after a few years, we were privileged to obtain our first two licenses in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. In around 2014, we were able to obtain a dispensary and a cultivation center. Of course, as with any new industry, and especially this industry, our journey has had its ups and downs also. We have made mistakes, we have grown up with the industry, and we have learned from our mistakes. And we feel that we have become much stronger and a much better organization. We are always participating in ongoing training for all of our employees to know and to follow all the ever-changing rules and regulations of our industry. We have hired third-party compliance companies to spot-check all of our work and processes. We communicate closely with our different jurisdictions to remain completely compliant and go above and beyond what is called for. All of our growth during this decade has been organic. We are a family-run company with no deep pockets. We firmly believe in pouring our profits back into the company and most importantly, back into our 40-plus employees now. We pay a living wage. As a matter of fact, most of our, many of our very young employees that are under the age of 30 are finally able to purchase their own cars, and some have even managed to purchase their own homes. Prior to working for us, they never even thought that that was a dream they had, and now they are succeeding there. As a result of all of our work two years ago, we were fortunate enough to be able to open up a MIPS business. That's the concentrate companies, marijuana infused products, infused products, in Aurora. And then we were also able to obtain a second cultivation at the same site. When speaking with our representative, Don Eden, in Wheat Ridge, yesterday, he informed us that our little storefront, that is about 200 square feet for the store sales, ranked 16th in 2017 out of 3,800 tax-remitting businesses. Just three years ago, we were the ones at the bottom when we opened up. We were like 3,610 or something like that. And our first year we brought, we had revenues of about half a million dollars. In 2017, with our Wheat Ridge facility and our MIPS facility in Aurora, that we collected, that our revenues were over $7 million in just these short years. And our Wheat Ridge store collected over $850,000 for the state and local taxes. We are very excited to join the Cortez community. We have already met many people here, especially Julie and Wayne, who run Lots of Pasta. We had dinner there tonight, and I know why they're really busy all the time, because it was really excellent. Our goal is to be a very active part of your community as we are in our current locations. We participate in Clean Colorado. We actively support our local banks fundraising, annual fundraising, golf tournament, which gives to local, and we also give to the local police foundation. Jason mentors young men going through tough times with his friend, John Davis, who's a psychologist who runs a company called a nonprofit foundation called Two Extreme Foundations. They work with at-risk teens to help them train and obtain a goal such as climbing Kilimanjaro, which Jason participated in about 10 years ago, 11 years ago now? It's been a while. 15 years ago. Time flies as I'm getting older and my children are getting taller. Our other business partner, Robert, and his extended family have created an all-volunteer non-for-profit organization which bridge generational gaps so that they go and do visitations to shelters, senior centers, and assisted living programs. I think they also go to some hospitals, but I'm not really sure about that. I travel mostly in Zambia, India, Europe, and other places, working with indigenous religious groups, primarily with the Catholic Church. And I provide with teams of my friends and stuff. We provide leadership training, development, and self-sustainability programs with the indigenous populations in these developing countries. Then my son, Matt, he splits his time between the U.S. Ski Team and our company. So he doesn't have too much time to do anything else right at the moment. But since this is his last Olympics, he's planning on coming back with us full-time, and he will, and his family will also be very involved in the community. We prove each site that we come to. We use local vendors, contractors, and we, of course, hire local employees. Four years ago, we operated with about five of us, and in four years, we've gotten up to 40, all with living wages. We now, we anticipate hiring at least a dozen local people to help run the facility if we are still granted this license. We want to bring our wonderful business culture with us to Cortez. Jason and our store manager, combining the two of them, will spend at least six months here full-time as they bring the local employees up to speed and that we can make sure that we put our culture into the storefront here. And I think that that's really important, that we do something like that so that we can stay on top of everything also. We look forward to working with our partners, the city staff, who we've already enjoyed working with, with Linda Smith, and your community. I'd like to thank you in advance for your consideration. And we'd also like to now bring up Craig Small, who is our attorney, who has helped us with our application process here. And he can do some explaining of some of our challenges that we've had over the years. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, are there any questions for us first, so far? I think we're done.
I think there will be, but.
Okay, thank you very, I'll be here.
Good evening, council members. My name is Craig Small, attorney of the law group, cannabis law firm out of Denver. And our firm has been helping our clients kind of make sense of what this process is and how to move forward. I think other than a couple instances that pardon the applicants past, this is a normal application. You have a family-run business, you have a mother and two sons. And the fourth owner is a family from back at high school. They've kept it close because that's where trust is and fear is important. They've successfully been able to prove that they have a track record of successful businesses that contribute to the community, that they are a positive game to the communities. With the exception of one application, two instances, one having to do with an incident in Denver and one having to do with an application in Commerce City. So that's what the council's going to see in the record. So we'll start with the incident in Denver first. They were employees of a marijuana cultivation facility, and they were routinely manifesting marijuana from one facility to another. At the time, the owner of the facility, which was not them, there was another owner. He was going through license changes and applying for licenses and moving licenses, transferring licenses. But them as employees, when they asked, well, what should we use the track in marijuana coming in and out of the business? He said, well, there's the license on the wall, use that license. So unfortunately, the marijuana software, the metric software, isn't sophisticated enough to recognize what's a valid license number and what's not. So they used the license number on the wall. Well, it turns out that license had expired, and the owner hadn't brought in licenses. The number they were using wasn't correct. They ended up, they ended up having this issue. They worked with the MED to figure out what was going on. They, the MED put an administrative hold on all the marijuana in question. None of it was, none of it left the system, all of it was tracked and metric. It was nothing, so probably anything. It was really just more of a clerical accounting error of which the parties aren't responsible for. You know, they honor the system, they respect the system, they're part of this regulated industry. It's very important for transparency, openness, and adherence to the rules. So even if you violate the rules, whether it's intentionally or not, they honor. And so they were issued a stipulation agreement order. It was a $20,000 fine, they paid the fine. They went through additional compliance training. They did everything that was ever asked of them. So you're going to see that in the applicant's record of that incident, of which given, fortunately or unfortunately, I'm not sure how you're going to look at it, there aren't so many disciplinary proceedings with the MED that we have a really good idea of, like in liquor. You know, if there's a violation, we know exactly what the violation sentence is going to be because there's been so many of them. It's very easy to forecast what's going to be. In the marijuana issue, we don't have it, and maybe that's great. There aren't so many violations that we can forecast what the sentences are. But at the time, I didn't actually represent them. It was a colleague of mine, he's Adam Boss, who was in the paperwork. He was the one who was working out that issue with the MED and they got them a standard deal, a standard deal could be here in the future. From beginning to end, they honored the system, and the punishment was $20,000, so they did that. That kind of flowed into another issue when they were applying for a local license in Commerce City. And as you know, the process is submit the application to the color of the regimen there on the court. And the application of that, they issued a conditional license, which they did in this instance. But what they realized was on question two, page four, and question two, page six, which I put in my material, they misanswered one question temporarily, which I'll explain in a second. And the other one, they made a mistake on. And the one question was, have you ever had a license that had a revoked? And when they submitted the application, the answer was no, so they checked no. But they were in the middle of this process with the MED, having the dude in Denver issue, that that no at some point turned into a yes. So in hindsight, what they should have done is amend the application and say, hey, that no just turned into a yes. Then the other issue was, have you ever, page six, question two, have you ever had a disciplinary action? And they said, no. And that was a mistake. That was a mistake. They weren't trying to fool anyone because they're submitting an MED application to the MED that they also entered into a stipulation in their order. So there's no logical way they could ever think that they were going to get away with something. So they said no to a disciplinary action, and that was incorrect. In their minds, they thought that that was the correct answer because they thought they paid the fine. They thought it would have been required of them, so they thought the situation is over. And they didn't quite see it as a disciplinary action, but that's what it was. So to rectify the situation, they submitted amended applications to the MED. The MED accepted the applications and never made an issue of it and issued them their conditional license. Unfortunately, Commerce City saw it differently. And so the Commerce City investigator that was in charge of parsing their application, working it through, did not like those answers. And because of that, they were denied an application in Commerce City, and that's fine. That's fine. Every jurisdiction has a right to determine their business if they have a jurisdiction. But Commerce City investigator went one step further. They went to all the jurisdictions that they're doing business and talked to the district attorneys to press criminal charges, and that's what they did. So Arapahoe County, Adams County pressed criminal charges in 2016. Start off with felony forgery. That process turned into four defendants, four defendants having four different attorneys. Collectively, they talked their attorneys, it was a thousand dollars in their debt. Those forecasts of that, they take this to trial would be several hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars or more, which is cost prohibitive. It's simply, family-run business simply could not do that. So in maybe late, I think November 2016, they all pled guilty to various different misdemeanors. And then so, and that's the information I put in the packet, is what the status of those misdemeanors are today. So Ms. Bedore, she was, she pled guilty to misdemeanor criminal simulation, which no one had ever heard of. I certainly haven't heard of it. The way the misdemeanors were chosen was basically the DA said, fine, we'll do a misdemeanor. That's okay. We'll think of what the sentencing would be, okay? But as for the crime, just pick one of those. They didn't really care what they pled guilty to, as long as they pled guilty to the misdemeanor. But unfortunately, on that list was this criminal simulation, which I hadn't heard of. And I had to look it up. It turns out that means when you're recording a deed or some kind of legal instrument for some sort of legal purpose, then if you forge that document and have it recorded, that's the simulation. the simulation of deceit. Well, I'm not sure that's exactly what was going on here, but again, they participated in the system, they honored the system, they were transparent with the investigators, and this is what they, they pled guilty to. Three out of four of them got deferred judgments and sentencing, which is a little unusual, in a good way. And then, if you plead guilty to this, we will have a mini sentencing hearing, but we'll, if you successfully complete that sentencing hearing, then we'll honor the charges. It's not going to be the same thing as having a guilty plea. For Ms. Bedore, she was sentenced to eighteen months probation. She actually finished her community service, and the judge took her off her probation, terminated the sentence entirely in just 49 days. So, so her sentencing, right now she stands here clearing, clearing free. For the other defendants, let's see, Mr. Dumagada, his sentence went from probation, let's see, it was 40 hours useful service, I think it was eighteen months probation. And his probation went to unsupervised probation, and his ends in November 2018. Mr. Saunders went to unsupervised probation, his probation ends in July 2018. And Jason Saunders, his probation ends in November 2018. So, three of the defendants are still on probation, two are unsupervised, one supervised, and all of them will be completing their sentences by November 2018. Between that process happening to today, there's been multiple MED inspections, there's been multiple compliance checks, and my client's advocate has passed all of them. In particular, the Aurora MED has done two inspections, of which one was as recent as February 8th, which they passed the foreign colors. And then the other one was from October 2017. Some of my exhibits overlap your exhibits, so I'm just kind of describing my exhibits. As part of the application process, there's something here that I haven't seen in really other applications. They actually have letters from Aurora and from Wheat Ridge in support of advocate. These jurisdictions are very kind and recognize that applicants have been a boon to their communities, so they want to participate in the process and help support their role in this community. In particular, we have a letter from Robin Peterson, from the Aurora Marijuana Enforcement Division. She was stating in her letter that applicant has addressed all concerns, that they've been proactive through the process of the trial, what has been going on. And I'll give out a exhibit as well. That they've been very forthcoming with all information. We also have a letter from Kathy Franklin, which is the former director of the Wheat Ridge Marijuana Licensing Authority. Her letter's a little bit more, I guess administrative, just saying that they maintain a good record with the city, they have very good relationships with her. She's actually retired, and Donald Edens has taken over the role, he's relatively new. But if the council's any questions or concerns about applicant's role in Wheat Ridge, we certainly encourage you to reach out to us and we'll do it. We also have a letter from the Wheat Ridge Council member and mayor pro temp, George Pond. And he says he's in genuine support of applicant, that they put extra effort, intelligence, and investment to be responsible for any potential concerns, that they're engaged and are honest partner. And we also have a letter from Victoria Freedom, from Safe Harbor Private Bank. I'm sure everyone's seen the news that one of the bains of this industry is banking. A lot of clients quietly have bank accounts, but certainly, bank account is probably one of the most difficult things to obtain in this industry. With everything going on with Commerce City issue, they had an account application with Safe Harbor, and certainly Safe Harbor was within their rights to say application denied, but they didn't. Instead, they said, let's hold on to the application, we won't grant it, deny it, let's see how this shakes out. And then with everything with the misdemeanor pleas and all the sentencing, Safe Harbor, who has probably maybe some of the most of them, because they could have entire banking project or both, if they make a mistake, Safe Harbor branded them their accounts. They actually did a bank through Safe Harbor to them. And with, the council should choose to accept this applicant and grant the license, they plan to open another account with Safe Harbor. Going through some of the exhibits, just, I'll start, I kind of explained exhibits, but now I'll go through some of the numbers. So, my exhibit one, basically one, two, three, and four, those are, those are where the applicant stayed with their sentencing. Yours may not be number, disagree on that?
They have small numbers, I can just answer them.
Okay.
Back on the lower right-hand corner?
Okay.
Someone new, someone new?
It's okay, I can just use that.
So that, that's the, that's the current status of their sentencing, so that you don't have to take it forward and see what the court orders say. I thought exhibit five would be helpful, because, I mean, I've been doing this for almost ten years, and even I stumbled over the applications and what exactly they mean. And some, most of these applications are several hundred pages long when it comes to application exhibits. So I believe it is easy to make a mistake. So, what I did was, I didn't include the entire application, I thought that was overkill, but by exhibit five, I put in the application that was at issue. And you see on the bottom right, there are page numbers. So, on the second page, which is page four of nine, question two, A, have you ever been denied a privilege license? And that was one of the ones that they answered incorrectly. And then on page six...
Can we just...
Yes.
All of this stuff from the applicant's is the very first package of materials when you're binding, and it goes through.
Are we talking about the probation stuff?
No, it's, it's about, about seven pages back here. It starts with the retail marijuana licensing application, it was like, at the bottom, it says page three of nine. And then let me just reference this on four of nine, two, eight.
Okay.
So I thought it'd be helpful for the council to see the questions, to understand the issue. So, on the, on page four, the question two, that was the one that was at issue where they hadn't quite entered into the stipulation agreement order. So, when they turned in this application, so it was correct at the time, the answer became incorrect later. And, but they should have proactively updated their application, they didn't. And then on the page, on the bottom, it says page six of nine, you can see the other question two, that the applicant ever had any disciplinary action. That's where they were confused. They thought that when they did their stipulation agreement order, that, that they, they paid the fine, they honored it, so it went away. They didn't put it together that that was the disciplinary action. So, but the end game of this was, the MED pointed out the issue, and they amended the application, the MED accepted the application, and the MED issued them a license. So certainly, MED did have an issue with this. For my exhibit six, this is my colleague, Foster, who was communicating with the MED at the time. I thought this letter was a good summary of the events of that time and settlement agreement, and I eventually came out of that, so it's, it's full of factual information that I encourage the council to read if there are any questions or concerns. But we don't need to take the council's time, valuable time now, I guess, to counsel for the questions.
I, I think I missed a question.
Yes?
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you could cover it.
No, sorry.
I was just looking at the court reports in the various cases, and I see the probation information. My question is, all of those charges were converted to misdemeanors or amended to misdemeanors? Is that, is that accurate?
Correct. They were all charged with felonies and then pled guilty to this, this letter plea.
Okay, thank you.
Two of them were done. I was, I was hired to do two of them, one in the past, one in the past, and Jason was hired to do two of them. And my...
Actually, see, can I have a look at my, at the superior court?
And then, and what was, and what was that charge? And you say it fell on the end, what was the charge?
What was it called?
It's, it's on the third.
It's the original one. The one that no one knew and that every, every attorney had to look up. But they were different charges for the same thing in two different counties. And so, it's part of the plea agreement, my charges in Arapahoe County were completely dropped, and Jason's charges in Adams County were completely dropped. So I just wanted to put that on the records. Two of the charges were completely dropped, and then four were brought down to misdemeanors, all of which were, each person had a different misdemeanor. Totally natural, I believe.
That would totally explain the difference in the probationary terms, but...
Everyone got something different, yes. All right, thank you.
And just, just to kind of, I mean, I, I'm not sure why you're shaking your head, but I can tell you why I'm shaking my head. They were all charged with different things, particular. They're not all completely different, but the sentencing was inconsistent.
But, but they all surround the fact that this application form was not correctly filled out.
Right. That was the common nucleus of fact.
Okay.
That each DA treated differently, charged differently. And then there was a global settlement that came out, something different for the parties. I'm not sure why Ms. Bedore goes 49 days, charged and dismissed, and everyone else is still on probation. I don't have an answer for that.
Now, there's a question that she did not get at the part, correct?
Right.
She, she has a conviction that it was a misdemeanor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the other people have...
Correct.
All right.
Okay. And so, it looks like, but you said it was in two counties, but they only initially, or they only proceeded through in Arapahoe County, is that correct, am I understanding that correctly?
It was a global settlement where they basically forced her.
Okay, thank you.
Exhibit seven, seven is just a letter of support. I don't know that this letter was included in the revision packet, I'm disagreeing, so I thought that this would be helpful. From Kathy Franklin over at the Syracuse Ridge. Exhibit eight is the Aurora MED compliance notice. They were, I think this is in, yeah, October 2017. So they, they went through their compliance check and passed the foreign colors. And then, even as we're preparing for this kind of gratuitously, I guess, Syracuse Aurora did another compliance check in February. Was this a part of it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, they did another check, and that also passed the foreign colors on the, on the media. And then everything past this is exhibits from this degree, which are things I wouldn't include if I did it anyways, about applicants and their MED, they've been granted their conditional license and forward, so as soon as this council makes a decision, it's going to be ready to go. The only other thing I'd like to add is, it seems like there's a domino effect. If, if this, if this license is granted, they buy this building, you know, there's a lots of pasta, that's pizza, another building on Main Street, which I'm glad it was pretty good. So, I'm hoping that, that the council kind of see this as a positive to the community, like it's certainly nice to have my clients here. Do you have any questions?
I don't at this time. Trying to wrap my head around some of this stuff, but it's in the process.
It took me a little bit to kind of read through it, to kind of understand what was going on. And then the only other thing I like to add, I guess, is my clients are transparent, open and honest throughout the whole process, so if you have any questions or concerns, they're, they'll always make themselves available.
I guess, one of my questions, and I think this might pertain to you guys a little bit more, from a logistical standpoint, it seems like you guys are fairly busy on the front range. What was the impetus behind trying to open up something down here in southwest Colorado?
Thank you for that question. As you know, there's a lot of counties and jurisdictions that do not allow marijuana. And one of the things that we did is, we did our research to see who did and who might have licenses available. Cortez was one of those places. And we looked at lots of different jurisdictions. But we came here, I met Linda Smith, she directed me towards Lots of Pasta, that's where we met Julie and Wayne, and I went back to our team and said, I really like Cortez, it's got Mason Verde near there, high up in the mountains, it would be a good fit for us. We're very outdoors people, very sports-minded, as you can tell with my son being on the US Ski Team. Jason was on the US Ski Team too, also. He was one of the youngest ever named to the US Ski Team for Aerials back in the day. He's been retired for a long time now. And so, we just fell in love with your community, and we thought that this would be a really great place to expand for our second storefront. If you have any... We haven't heard you talk about it.
It was perfect.
That was a good setup.
Thank you. Can I, can I ask Mr. Small one question again? Sorry, Mr. Small, yeah. So, since they remain, I understand they're on unsupervised probation, is there any, is there any concern with regards to, what would happen if they were to violate probation during the terms of issuing this license?
If they violate probation, that it's certainly additional criminal charges for whatever that violation would be, those would start building into the motions, depending on what's going on. But then they would be called back in court for additional sentencing.
So I understand from a court perspective, from a licensure administrative perspective, how would that impact their business here if they were to get a license issued? Would there be any impact from that?
Well, I, I can't say I'm 100% familiar with Cortez rules.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, Colorado Marijuana Licenseure.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay.
Let me clarify.
Would the MED care?
Yes.
I don't think so. Because certainly, there's, there's no even requirement to report it. You only have to report felonies within 10 days of being charged and committed. There's no requirement to report a misdemeanor. What would happen is, when they go for the license renewal, there'll, there'll be a question, has there been any, I forget what that question, has anything happened since the last time you were renewed? You submit that information, and then it moves on. The MED has never really issued, as far as I know, has never cared about misdemeanors at all, they cared about felonies. And even, I've seen felony crimes, I've seen felony assaults, I've seen felony charges go through, but applicants still get a license and sentencing.
Sure. And so, I guess, tagging up with that, thinking about our regulations here in this community, in order to get a license, one of the criteria is to be a person of good moral character. And so, I guess that's where I'm sort of, I mean, I'm not saying you're going to break the probation, I want to be very clear, I just want to know what the implications would be on the business and the community if, if we issue a license and there's that potential out there? Or how, is there any plans in place to sort of curtail any fallout from something like that that would happen, I guess?
Well, I guess it would depend, I, it would be surprising if all four, or actually at this point, all three defendants violate probation. It's going to be some event, I'm not sure what's going to happen there.
They'd have to deal with me.
Okay.
And another thing on that, as far as the store level, I can guarantee my business part is out, it's like very violated, but on the store level, we strive to be, be most compliant and proper, and we bring outside auditors, so, so we know that if we say any intention, anything that has to do with, not there with us, you will be, not there.
And then, also, can I just mention that on the state application, it also has that moral clause, and it does for the other jurisdictions also. And they see us as good people, and that we've been doing a great business, and so they have reissued all of our licenses multiple times with all the knowledge of what we had to go through, both the state and the city, in both cities.
What, what are the conditions of your probation, specifically?
Basically, you don't need to go outside.
Oh, okay. I mean, there's, there are no restrictions on where you can go or who you can associate with, or...
You don't need to travel from, from Los Angeles.
But traveling back and forth between the Denver area and here would...
Actually, only two of them had to do that. My son Matt and I did not have to do that. Well, I got permission right in the very beginning because I was going overseas right away, and I was going to be gone for two months. And so, I got permission, and then, as soon as I got back, then the judge dismissed everything else away from me. And then Jason and Robert got probation that they had the restrictions on, and then Matt Saunders, who's traveling all over the world, he, he did not have to go back each time, he was just a blanket grant, that he couldn't go.
And I noticed that basically, you can't have guns, you have to stay away from the gun smell, and not be near it.
I was going to say, that's kind of...
They know, they know our business.
With, with. Okay.
Basically, if anything happens besides a traffic citation, we have to report it and let the side have an angle.
It wouldn't be good.
We haven't gotten in trouble before this and we won't plan on doing it.
And, and, and again, just declare, the, the probation ends at what time, what's the date? When is it?
It's September.
September of this year.
Each one is different, but it's all this year.
Okay.
Mr. Domagada, his probation is November two thousand eighteen. Matthew Saunders ends in July two thousand eighteen. And Jason Saunders ends in November two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so July, November, November.
If this helps, um, clarify things, based on my past experience, they just have standard terms and conditions of probation. There was nothing special about probation that they got related to the offense. It was just what everybody on probation asked.
Do you have to check in with our moms? I mean, if I, if I can ask that, or, I know you're sitting on supervised, are you basically just writing out the end of it?
So I'm still, I'm still supervised.
Oh, okay.
I call, I have a call every two, two and a half months with my probation officer, we talk about stuff.
Just a check in?
And then I call her and ask if the traffic permits, as long as I have on my report, if she's up to be all right, so.
Okay, thank you.
And Bob's is the same way, but his is, um, his is unsupervised now. His is unsupervised, yeah. And then Matt's was never supervised. And I was never supervised. Also the same thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any further questions from the council? Mr. Green, a procedural question, we do have the owners of Lots of Pasta here, it says we have, but that'd be part of our presentation.
If you want to, yes, sir, would it be the best way to look?
Who would have thought fifteen years ago, the building we were buying would be sold?
If, if you would state your name and your address.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Julie Nadolsky, owner of Lots of Pasta and That's Pizza.
Julie Nadolsky of Lots of Pasta.
So who would have ever expected that fifteen years ago, when we bought this building, that would ever sell for anything other than another restaurant? I guess, you know, a few years ago, when we first, um, asked about it, it was like, no, no, no. And eventually I was like, all right, well, maybe. And then I have to say, we met Sandy, she approached us with, um, a letter of intent to buy the building. And she came down, we were pretty impressed, she seemed like a very trustworthy person and, um, very social. She pretty much told us everything upfront as to what had happened in her past. Everything had been taken care of and so, oh, she seemed like a, a very respectable person. And then we were very anxious to meet her son and the other co-owner, Bob. And, um, we're also very impressed, uh, they came to meet Linda, um, and she seemed to be impressed as well. So, on that note, we eagerly looked for a new location. It was a kind of a challenge because there's not a whole lot of options here in Cortez to move, uh, rest on our size. But, um, we were able to locate a place, uh, it's the old Antonio's, which is one oh four north, I'm sorry, one oh four east Maine. Um, we've been working very hard with Mitchell Toms, who owns that property, to come up with floor plans. And so we completed those floor plans with his architect and are very eager to get started on construction so that we can move into that new location. Our business into that new place, new location will be both pizza and pasta. So Lots Pasta and That's Pizza, all in one building, one floor, one kitchen. We're really excited. So if this happens, we're very eager to, uh, work on the location.
Thank you, any questions?
My understanding was that the, the building had already been sold, was that, is that incorrect?
That is correct, actually, it will be being sold to.
Okay, so it hasn't been closed on?
Yeah. So, yeah, once the building sells, sells, but, and I think that's going to be early in mid-March here. Um, that's when we will then be moving all of our equipment, um, and starting into the new location, one oh four.
So is the sale of the building contingent upon them getting the license? Okay. Any other questions, counsel?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have some questions. What I've done is, again, this is something new a little bit, um, but it follows the ordinances. Um, we're going to go through briefly the exhibits that are after the blue section in the binder, um, so one by one, as you follow. There's some duplications in the book because a lot of stuff came in from several different places, like the letters of recommendation, we got them from the applicants, I got them from Linda, Officer Nagel got them. So I apologize for any confusion that might have caused, but I didn't want to leave one out and miss it, so. What I'd like to do, Linda, if you could swear in, Officer Nagel, please. Um, Officer Nagel, could you state your name and where you're employed, please?
Boyd Nagel, I work for the Cortez Police Department.
And what do you do there, sir?
Uh, I work control and also marijuana alcohol and tobacco compliance.
Okay, and, uh, do you conduct, you conduct investigations into licensees that are now existing who sell marijuana in the city of Cortez?
Yes, sir.
And do you also conduct investigations about new applications for new licenses within the city?
Yes, sir.
What do you do in those investigations, sir?
It's a complete background, we go through other locations, criminal records, public records, things like that.
And are you familiar with the Colorado State Marijuana Licensing Laws?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the City of Cortez licensing laws or ordinances?
Yes.
And did you conduct an investigation into or about the application made by Chronic Therapy Cortez LLC?
Yes, sir.
And did you look into the backgrounds of its owners?
I did.
And who are the four owners, sir?
Uh, this is Better, the two sons and, uh, Mr. Domagada.
And did you contact the state licensing authority about these folks in this LLC?
Yes.
And did you contact the other locations where they were currently licensed?
Yes.
And did you review the court records about, um, what Mr. Small has, um, introduced before the council and talked about?
Yes, sir.
Um, did you get copies of the state discipline action?
Yes, sir, I did.
And that would be the agreement?
Uh, yes, stipulation.
And did you get copies of the state criminal charges and what the outcomes were?
Yes, sir.
And what I'd like you to do is you have a book in front of you, um, and I'd like to ask you, um, if you'd go to the blue section, please? Okay, there might be, uh, I'm not sure, the first document in it would be a state of Colorado Department of Revenue copy of a license.
Yes, sir.
And is that a copy of the license which has been issued to Chronic Therapy?
Yes, sir, the license from the state.
And that's a valid license, there's no problems with it right now?
There's no problem.
And the second thing in that section, could you tell us what that is?
The application for the sale.
And is that filled out completely and, um, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And after that application, um, there's a list of stores and what is that?
Uh, this is their license.
So these are the other locations? These are the other locations where they are licensed?
Yes.
And after that, um, there's a letter from, um, the current owners of the Lots of, or the ten twenty South Broadway, Lots of Pasta. And, uh, is that? Have you verified that?
The letter?
Talks about that the Streamline Management agrees that, uh, these folks are gonna, they can apply for a license of the location.
The next thing I have in this one is the, the letter of recommendation from where one of the users, uh, Boyd's Aurora.
Okay, there should be a section that starts out with, um, an email from me to the Holden Law Group. And then it goes, um, the retail license, the application, the four locations, um, the letter from the property owners agreeing to the application.
Is that in our package?
I, I think it's a little true.
I think something got.
Yeah.
And this would be towards the, um, it's the next to the last section in the book.
Is that the one that has the diagram of that?
Yes, ma'am, it's part of that stuff. It's a little bit ahead of it.
I see something from building and planning.
And there is a memo in there from building and planning saying that the property is.
Yes.
And there's a diagram of the premises as well?
Yes, sir.
And there's a copy of a public notice?
Yes, sir.
And after the public notice, I have a January thirtieth, twenty eighteen memo from Sam Propper to Linda Smith?
Yes.
Okay. And then I have a document from Adam Foster of the Holden Law Group, um, do you have that?
No, sir, that's, the last thing I have is the memo from.
Do you have a copy of the stipulation agreement in order between the M E D and these books? Pardon? Um, look after the green page?
Yes, I do have it.
Okay. And what is that stipulation agreement order, what's that about?
That's about the violations that we place in Aurora and, uh, Denver and, uh, E three.
And is this what Mr. Small talked about where the parties had, said, yes, we violated the law, agreed to pay a fine and were disciplined by the state?
Yes, sir.
And then after that document, is there a letter, um, that talks about a settlement offer between the state and, this pretty much reflects what's in the agreement?
From the, from the law group?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Now, we go to the next section, um, if this follows through, there's, this is a section that talks about all the different criminal pleas which were entered into between the four defendants and the.
Yes, sir.
Now, those are all pretty, these documents in here are fairly consistent with what was, um, testified to or talked about by Mr. Small?
Yes, sir.
And so do you agree with him that there appears to be one finalized conviction and three deferred judgments and sentencing?
Yes.
And you agree that they're all misdemeanors?
Yes.
And that appears to be the extent of what was done of, on the criminal side of this discipline?
Yes, sir.
Those are my questions.
All right, counsel, are there, do you have any questions?
I just have a copy of the license application or the letter from the, um, property owners, I think we just have someone to look at.
And I apologize, is that an? Basically, what I did looks, so we went through the requirements of our ordinance and showed that they were, they complied with everything, everything's done. Um, we did our background checks as required. And as I stated in the memo, um, the staff has no recommendation, but we want to give copies of everything to consider and to ask questions of the officer or the applicant. Right, and, uh, Ms. Green, if I could, counsel, I would just ask, uh, Boyd, I mean, is basically your, your understanding from these cases and these pleads, basically what the applicant represented? I mean, did you find anything different or is, is basically what they represented to counsel what you found?
Basically, it's what I found.
Okay.
And I don't know whether it's fair to ask you this or, or not, but, um, since, since the state has, has apparently since, since these infractions, the state has continued to renew licenses. It doesn't seem, appear that, that they are looking at this as being, um, a, a violation or that, that the applicants for the license here in Cortez are of unsavory character or shouldn't be allowed to have a marijuana license.
I am not sure what the state is.
Well, would the state have issued a license had, had, had they felt that that was the case?
Yes.
They would have issued a license even though they felt that the, that the applicant was, did, did not have the character to have a license?
Oh, no, ma'am.
Oh, okay, okay. Roy, do you have anything to add?
No, Boyd did all the investigation and, uh, he's pretty complete with what he's done and so I have nothing else to add.
So, so just to clarify, my mind seems to me that what the issue is, there are two issues. One was that they, when you were working for somebody else, the individual who owned that business failed to get their license renewed. You put incorrect information on, on tracking papers for marijuana that was being sold or transferred. And you guys were the ones that were punished, was the owner of the business punished as well?
Okay, so, yes, that's pretty close to it. Um, but the way that everything happened was that at the facility that, um, my sons were employers of the other, um, dispensary, um, that our growth facility had been robbed. And so we, like we were supposed to, we made a police report. And then during that investigation for the police report, that's when it was discovered that, um, that our license, that the license for our growth, so they had been sold out from underneath that building, which we had no knowledge of. We were, we were put on administrative hold for six weeks, which was even back then very fast. And after they did their investigations and after we were able to show that we had all the, all of our, um, inventory and everything, then with the help of the M E D, we destroyed the inventory that was in question. And then they allowed us to open up again.
Okay, and that was, that was the twenty thousand dollar fine and the suspension of business.
Well, that took a year, that took a year of negotiations to get to that and so, and then we were held in, what was it, two weeks in abeyance if we, if anything happened. And just so that you know where our heads were at, we're not attorneys or anything, we're just a small mom and pop shop. And so when we paid that fine, we didn't think that, we didn't know that legally that was part of what they call, uh, a disciplinary action. So when we marked the.
And so that's, that's when you ran into the second difficulty, which was. Which was incorrectly filling out an application for opening up another store in another town. And so, and so they're, two are related in that sense.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clear, because I thought that's what it was, but.
And as far as the other company goes, um, I don't know what their exact stipulation agreement is, what kind of, um, fines they pay, or do you know that they have closed, uh, around now?
Yeah, like six months.
We completely separated ourselves from that, obviously, the suit was after we found out about what's happening and then, we have to pay the consequences.
And we did, we paid the consequences, we did try to get out of it, we followed the process, we followed the procedures. And we were very clear again, before we even put in our application, um, Adam Foster, our other attorney, and Linda and I had a conversation. So we didn't even want to proceed with an application. so we didn't even want to proceed with an application until the city knew everything that we had done.
Okay.
We were trying to be open and honest.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
If I could just add a piece to the puzzle, I realize it's missing is, there was the growth facility and then there was their store, they were the employees of the growth facility, they were the owners of the store, so when the store got robbed, they called the cops, the cops had the investigation, saw that this number was incorrect, but because they were transparent probably, they're, whether the employees, they, oh, this is the store that I got, got a disciplinary action.
So, at, at, at this stage, um, is there any other testimony, Mike, that we need to hear?
No, ma'am.
As they say, we rest.
And so then, do we set this for a public hearing? Is that the next step?
Tonight, you're making the decision amongst yourselves, I suppose you would be discussing what you want to do, if you had any more questions, you could ask them, but it's now up to somebody.
For us to make a motion.
I suppose to make a motion as to what to do.
Carrie?
Yes.
We do need to open a public hearing today.
Okay, okay. All right, so now that we've all heard all of the evidence, I'm going to open this up for public hearing, and at this point, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against, um, the city issuing a marijuana license for these applicants, this is your chance. Going once, going twice?
One.
Okay. Closing the public hearing. Um, does, does anybody on council have an additional question or, or comment?
Uh, I think I got the information I needed to, um, people doing the license.
Okay. Um, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion approving that new retail marijuana store for therapy-Cortez LLC, located at Clint 20 South Broadway in Cortez.
A second.
McLaughlin.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Sheek.
Hi. All right. All right. Okay, we almost need to take a break here. Um, we have no unfinished business at this time. New business, fail the bid results for the 2018 supplemental snow removal, because we have so much we need to worry about this year.
I was hoping I would jinx this, but I was wrong.
Thanks, Boyd.
Okay, we went out to a bid for supplemental snow removal, uh, we'd spoken about this a couple of meetings this year, and, uh, we received one bid from Daniels Concrete and Excavation. Um, there isn't a hard and fast bid number because this is a services contract, it'll only be used as needed and it would call on various equipment as we would, you know, dictate. Uh, he did provide hourly rates for a front end loader at a hundred dollars per hour, a dump truck at eighty-five, a backhoe at ninety, a motor grader at a hundred and ten and snow plow at ninety. Uh, Don Royce, our public work superintendent, uh, gauged these costs against a book that we utilized to charge CDOT for our equipment, and it's right in line with an operator.
Okay.
So I, 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 I really hope that we get to, uh, use this service this year, if in fact you guys will approve it, um, and the staff recommends awarding the 2018 supplemental snow removal bid to Daniels Concrete and Excavation at the posted rates.
Okay, are, does anybody have a question on this?
Nope.
All right.
I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
So are they on call when you guys get backed up?
We, yeah, uh, Don Royce would make the call to activate them based on our, on our snowfall rates and how we're doing.
Thank you.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to award the 2018 supplemental snow removal bid to Daniels Concrete and Excavation.
Second.
Keel.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
McLaughlin.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Sheek.
Hi.
That was the first time I've ever called for the motion, this was great, thank you, be here all night.
You did great, did a good job.
All right, appointment to the Planning and Zilling Commission of Robert Reamy. Tracy.
Good evening, counsel, um, so Planning Commissioner Ken Bringle resigned recently and we were fortunate to have an interested citizen apply pretty soon after, and that citizen was Robert Reamy, who submitted a letter of interest on January 16th, and the Planning Commission met with and interviewed him at the February 6th meeting, which was just a week ago, we're trying to move quickly on this, and they voted unanimously to recommend Robert Reamy to serve on the Planning Commission, so if, uh, so if counsel chooses to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, you can make the motion to appoint him to the commission.
All right. Robert's here, did you want to say anything or?
Do you have a speech, Robert?
All right, if there, if there aren't any questions or comments, um, may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Robert Reamy to the Planning and Zilling Commission.
Second. McLaughlin.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Sheek.
Hi.
All right, uh, the bid for the Police Department HVAC replacement project, Rick.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the, um, City of Cortez budget provides for the replacement of the heating, cooling and ventilating system at the Cortez Police Department. Uh, the existing system has been in since it was new, nineteen ninety-six, and, uh, we're become, coming to the end of its useful life for the existing system, and we've had numerous issues over the past couple of years. Um, ME and E Engineering was engaged to, first of all, do an assessment of the building, and then we later, uh, turned that into an engineering of the project, and, um, specifications of bids were sent out on February 6th. Uh, the city received four responses to that proposal. Uh, the low bidder is Gars Incorporated, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-eleven dollars, uh, they're out of Durango. Second was, uh, WCA Remanute Construction, three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-four-ninety-nine. Um, ME and E has reviewed the bids and contacted, uh, the apparent low bidder of Gars, and, uh, everything seems to be in order.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions about this? This is the year for HVAC replacement, huh?
Yeah, and it, it's not over, it really isn't, I mean, we have rec center, police department, I know the libraries is closed, you know?
Oh, wonderful.
And, and that was one of the big drivers for our cost on this building as well, so, you know, I, I feel like, uh, if I can leave any legacy as city manager, it's going to be, uh, general comfort and offices, that's what I've got.
Except they'll all need to be replaced at the same time, so whoever comes up with that will be testing you out.
Yeah, in fifteen years, the shoe is going to drop.
All right, are there, um, may I have a, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do you pronounce that name?
Gars.
Gars, like, er.
Gars.
Gars.
Yeah. Yep, Johnny Depp. Um, can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to award, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to award the 2018 Police Department HVAC project to the low bidder of Gars, at the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-eleven dollars.
Second.
Keel.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
McLaughlin.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Sheek.
Hi.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, resolution number six, series twenty eighteen, approving the lease of real property, um, between Cortez and the Crow Canyon. Shane.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so the city owns the Colorado Welcome Center, uh, for the past few years, we have leased out the retail space to Mesa Fairmont Museum Association. Uh, they determined, uh, late last year that, uh, it wasn't profitable enough for them to be in the location, so, uh, they gave us notice. Um, we, um, sent out an RFP, um, to see who else would be interested, and we had one respondent who was Crow Canyon. Um, staff met with the representatives, Debbie Fish, who is the VP of Operations, and Paul Maddox, who's here tonight, he's the Director of Sales and Marketing, and probably ecstatic, he came here on the night of a hearing to discuss marijuana plays, so, um, so he got an extra, an hour and a half of, uh, local government in action. Um, so, um, meeting with them, staff was really impressed, uh, with them, I think that Crow Canyon really just wants to have a presence in the city, um, so this to them is a way to, to maybe get a better footprint here, um, so they don't have a, a huge profit motive here, they just kind of want to be here, I think they have some cool programming ideas, um, some cool connections, um, so, I'll tell you, staff is really excited about the opportunity to work with Crow Canyon. Um, one item we did bring up to them is that eventually we would like to see the ticket sales come back to the Welcome Center, um, and they are willing to take on that function, uh, assuming that the park is willing to, um, allow another entity to sell tickets other than Mesa Fairmont Museum Association. Uh, as I mentioned to counsel in the past, um, Cliff Spencer, their Superintendent, and I are tentatively, um, set to meet this June to talk about bringing those sales back to Cortez. Um, the, the only little hitch in the giddy up there is that, um, in order to sell these tickets, uh, anybody who does it has to have a federal background check, which is quite extensive and quite expensive, and so Crow Canyon did mention that, that this could be a little bit of a burden for them, and, and we've just agreed that, you know, maybe that, it'll mean that the city will need to participate financially to have them do that, maybe we'll have one or two employees that get a background check and we'll co-sell tickets with them. Um, we're not really defining it right now, because we're not kind of crossing that bridge yet, um, but we just have identified, um, it's our desire to have the tickets back in the Welcome Center, um, they're willing to do it, and, and I think that, uh, we can collegially and responsibly work together to figure that out, um, if, if the park allows us to have those ticket sales back. Um, so the, the lease itself, it's the same terms as our previous lease with Mesa Fairmont Museum Association, so it's the exact same lease rates, uh, this initial term is not quite a two-year term, we took it, uh, we're starting in February, uh, we just took it through the end of December, um, in twenty nineteen, um, so it's basically two years of operations for them, and then, um, hopefully, we have, things have gone swimmingly for them and work static, and we can go longer, but I, I think for this initial push into the city, uh, they felt more comfortable with the two-year term, and, um, that was fine with us. Um, so, um, staff is recommending approval of resolution six, twenty eighteen.
I was really pleased to see some of the ideas that, that you guys are willing to come and, and, and do more than just sell some stuff, that you're wanting to do some programs and, and really, um, provide some, some programming and some education for our tourists, so I think that's great. Just please. All right, are there any other questions, comments?
I have none.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion, uh, to approve resolution number six, series twenty eighteen, a resolution approving a lease of real property between the City of Cortez and Crow Canyon Archaeological Center. Is that?
Lucero.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
McLaughlin.
Hi.
Sheek.
Hi. Right.
Thank you, thanks for wanting to be here.
So when do you guys move in and start? When do you start? When are you coming, when are you moving in? When will be your first day on site? Okay, great.
They would like to borrow your car.
Yeah, so they can start moving stuff. All right. Um, uh, the twenty eighteen third-party beneficiary funding agreement, uh, for Montezuma Inspire Dean.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, last but not least, right, so, um, the Montezuma Inspire Coalition that the City of Cortez is a member of was awarded a Great Outdoors Colorado grant for over one-point-eight million dollars on December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. The purpose of the grant is to inspire our local youth to get outdoors more in our local communities and the surrounding area. The Montezuma Land Conservancy is the fiscal agent for the Montezuma Inspire Coalition funding and is now requesting for the city to enter into a funding agreement in order to receive funds and participate in this grant opportunity. For the city's portion of the Montezuma Inspire Coalition, Great Outdoors Colorado grant, we will be receiving eighteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty dollars over the next three years to provide outdoor field trips for both youth and families to engage in outdoor activities, including river rafting through a commercial outfitter, hiking, fishing, backpacking and overnight camping. We anticipate the total cost being thirty-four-thousand-four-hundred dollars for these outdoor trips. And I think also, uh, we added, I think on Monday, the grant agreement with MLC and Great Outdoors Colorado, it should have been an addition to, I believe, to your, to your packets. So tonight, it just be to, uh, is requesting the, to review the funding agreement and to approve that with, uh, Montezuma Land Conservancy.
All right, counsel, any questions, comments?
I have none, thank you.
All right, may I have a motion?
Uh, the motion tonight is just for the agreement, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion, uh, to approve the agreement between the Montezuma Land Conservancy and the City of Cortez.
Second.
McLaughlin.
Hi.
Carlson.
Hi.
Keel.
Hi.
Lucero.
Hi.
Sheek.
Hi.
All right, uh, we have no draft resolutions or ordinances, no other items of business. Is there anybody that would like to step up and speak to counsel? One of these days, you'll make it all the way up there. Um, no city attorneys report? Shane?
Uh, yes, ma'am, just, uh, twenty-five quick things to run by.
Go ahead.
You have three seconds.
First is, um, believe it or not, uh, this next Monday, on President's Day, will be our one-year anniversary moving into City Hall.
Oh, my gosh.
Which is pretty exciting, so, um, yeah, so we're, we're excited about that, I'm just telling everybody.
But nobody will be here, why don't you, are?
Yeah, we are, that's actually my second announcement, we are closed on President's Day.
A lot of celebration.
Well, 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 last year we celebrated by canceling President's Day and working, so this year we're going to actually not be here. But again, we've been here a year and I just thought it was momentous to announce that. Um, I wanted to say we had an awesome turn hour for the employee appreciation party, I want to really thank, uh, Linda and Brett and Dicky and John and Rosa, uh, for being our committee who really worked so hard on this, and also thanks to, uh, Councilwoman Carlson for, uh, helping to slide up the comedians. Um, it, it really was a neat deal and, and, um, three-quarters of them, I found to be really funny, so.
Good, well, and I just want to say, so, when that group first started coming here, totally on a whim, they love the sunflower, they love Cortez, I've had over forty people friend request me asking to come here, comics from all over the area, they love it here, so watch for more.
Great, well, 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 thanks to everybody who, who came, and it was, it was just fantastic night.
Right.
Um, and I just am really concerned that a year from now, that committee has set such a high bar, you know?
Oh, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep looking for better, better talent.
Yeah, I'm just imagining somebody like chugging chainsaws or something, I mean, you guys figured out, I'm not on the committee, but, uh, um, and then also, I want to announce that Philly Engineering is in town, uh, they're the engineering firm working on our fiber, uh, plan for our feasibility studies, so, so we're underway there, and then, um, our management intern, Peyton Heitzman, starts on February twenty-sixth, so that's, uh, basically two weeks from now, so counsel will get to meet her the next morning, so she's almost here, and that's all I've got.
All right, great. Um, are there any council committee reports?
I have none.
Let, let me ask, I don't, I think we asked once, but let me ask again, is there anybody that would be willing to go to a Makeda meeting?
The, the timing makes it impossible.
I know it's hard for you, and I know it's, well, it's hard for all of you, you guys. All right, well, I, I, I talked to, I talked to somebody.
And, and Your Honor, if I can, when they come up, I, I really will try, it's just, you know?
Well, keep, keep me in the loop, it's because I never, I can't, I can't remember.
They meet monthly?
Yeah, they meet monthly.
Yes.
if it's something that's really a concern, like there'd be just two of us at the meetings, I'd want to see it, so I, I think part of it is just being smart and kind of knowing, you know, items of interest. It would be good if we could have somebody there, but I think there may be some meetings where we absolutely positively need to make the priority.
Right, so, okay. I just want to remind council that you all received an invitation to come to the broadband forum, it's going to be this coming Tuesday, from six until eight. Shane, John, Mark Drudge, and Miriam, who's the, Gilla Wilds, who's the Executive Director for Southwest Colorado Council of Governments, have been working on the program. We're going to try to have a number of people from the community come and talk about, you know, the importance of broadband to them. Miriam will spend a little bit of time talking about the challenges and the costs and some of those kinds of things. And Shane's going to talk about, you know, the future and why it's something that's important to us. So I, if there's any way that you can come, I'd really love to see you there, because I'm sure you want to spend another Tuesday night here in City Hall. And we do have a number of council candidates that are planning on being there. Actually, we've got several on the list that are planning on coming. I would also like to extend to you an invitation, so that you could put this on your calendar and plan ahead now. On March the 15th, I believe it is, League of Women Voters is going to have a candidates, I don't know whether I'd actually call it a debate night, but there, there will be an opportunity for all of the council candidates to come and answer some questions. And again, I'd encourage you to come if you can, let your friends and neighbors know so that they can come, so that when it comes time to vote, they'll have something.
They're going to do that here.
And it'll be done here, yes. It'll be done here, it will be recorded, we can, people can live, live stream it from home if they want to the night of the event, or they can look it up and, and watch it again and again. So I will be doing the same thing with the broadband as well. And that's, that's it. Is that seven to nine-thirty, I think, wasn't it?
Seven to eight-thirty.
Seven to eight-thirty, sorry.
They were calling it meet the candidate.
Yeah, I can't, I'm trying to keep track of the, the times for these different events. So anyway, mark those down if you can. I wasn't here for the workshop tonight for a lot of it, so.
Tonight's workshop, we introduce some new city employees. I'm not used to running the workshop, so I didn't write anything down. I'm just going to wing it. All right. Our new city employees are Keith Kramer, who is our new Code Enforcement Officer, Building Inspector, Todd Kramlich, am I pronouncing that correctly, Kramlich?
Yeah, close enough, he's not here.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't care if he's not here.
He's going to be our new golf course superintendent, so we're excited to finally fill that position. I know Dean's been working really hard with that, so thank you, appreciate all the time and effort you put into that. And a man by the name of Don Cantrell, who will be our new Parks Worker slash Irrigation Specialist, so we're really happy to finish all of those positions. We had some discussion with Eric Iconoy, who runs our library, about some minor reorganization with staff, and that seemed to go pretty well, and we were all amiable to his requests. We talked about outcomes and possibilities with our long-range advance review, and kind of what that entails and what that looks like with City Manager Hale. Discussion on current status of water supply and water conservation plan, that also occurred with Mr. Hale and Phil Johnson, our Public Works Director. And our Water Superintendent of this area is by, a man by the name of Rich Landreth. And I guess one thing to add to that is that that's always kind of a constant in the back of our minds issue that we're dealing with, is what our outlook, our long-term water issues are going to be. And I know for me, it's really good. It's good for me to know as a councilman and a member of this community that we are really forward-thinking when we're talking about things like our water issues. So I really appreciate that with our city, that we look ahead on stuff like that. And then we adjourned to an executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. One note, real quickly, we have a young man in the audience by the name of Kale Hall, who's working on his Eagle Badge, and tonight, he's fulfilling his political requirement, I guess. Is that right? Is that what? Okay, communication. So, I mean, A-plus for me, hearing me talk, I don't, you know, I don't know what you thought about some of these other guys, but I felt like I did a great job.
Are you in the class that he graded you on?
No.
I, I heard the tone of voice there.
Yeah. In, in, Mayor Portemco, we also in the workshop talked about lowering the price for sale of the property we own, so.
Oh, right, yeah, we, some real estate where we have a piece of property where we were discussing whether or not to lower the actual asking price, to see if we can move it.
And it's really a hot opportunity, I think, for anybody in the community, if you're looking for office space, come and talk to me after the meeting, please, so all reasonable offers will be considered.
I, I would like to say just one thing, I hope it's appropriate before we close tonight, and, and, and that is that I, I would like to extend a thanks to the Police Department. We had an incident, what was it, a week or so ago, that had the potential to have been pretty volatile, and I think because of, of the leadership on Roy's part, and because we have a really good police department, something that could have been a tragedy, didn't, everybody got to go home, and I, I think that's pretty great. We, we, and I think it's important for our staff to know how much they're appreciated, because police are having a hard time in lots of places now, so.
I have a question about that. Does the NICSO system that everybody was getting the alerts from come from your department?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
The NICSO system, you can go online and sign up.
But it's kind of cold.
Yeah. Takes 30 seconds.
I got a larger storm watch this last night.
I just.
I don't have to get off the couch. Yeah. Mine told me that Sean White won gold, his third gold, so.
Oh, don't ruin it, I went to watch it.
Play NICSO, I'm sorry.
NICSO.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the community, or the city? All right. We are adjourned.